If you haven't had a chance to, I'll call the media board. And if you haven't had a chance to read the minutes, please do that. And then once we've gotten everybody, I'll take a motion. Second. Anybody have any comments, additions, corrections?
We're just going to put the wedding barn. And over the long, we talked about the issue of all the bartenders being, you know, the concern about drunk driving, all the bartenders being, having gone through the course, but that would have gone through the vendors, right? And that would be the responsibility of the caterers.
People who are handling the alcohol.
Right. I'm wondering if we need something spelled out.
I remember the discussion, I don't remember.
Most of the caterers have the bartenders tip trained, or at least they should.
Right.
They don't, they're liable anyway. Yeah, so in order to cover it, I would say they need to have their bartenders.
And I think that when they work in town for an event, I think that they have to notify the selectmen. And I think the selectmen handle things like that. I'm very sure they don't, I'm not sure, but you can check on it if you want.
I think you're correct, because it really is under our purview to check on licensing increments for that type of thing.
I just remember it came up as a concern, and I don't remember exactly how this was.
I think Mr. said that the vendors had tip certified. You know, they're all tip certified by vendors.
Yeah, I don't remember the specific answer, but I do remember the discussion. I remember that it had come up. But it seemed at the time that it was satisfactory.
Yes.
Even though I can't tell you how that was explained.
Well, they know they're liable for anything that might happen. Stuff like that, I mean, if somebody gets, if he gets pulled over for drunk driving, that's going to go to their license.
We'll see what Ken has to say when he comes back. We'll hold the vote for a minute. How's that?
On the big bottom page two, two, four, it sort of says that the parking area will be divided with a vegetated buffer. I'd like to change it to say there are two vegetated buffers who are with vegetated buffers.
That's right, because there was a discussion about.
We'd agree on two, but I don't want to hold it to two.
And he wanted to have trees and this and that. So we're going to appoint him there and make it a plural.
And also on the front page, the size of the oil spill. Said approximately three square feet. I'd like to change that to six square feet or 10 square feet. Because it definitely wasn't three, I mean, three square feet is like one by three. That's like, the thing was like king size, so maybe 10 square feet. Three by three, I mean, that sounds about right.
Do we have to put a size?
That's what I was thinking.
Okay, we just wanted to.
Yeah, I was just thinking three square feet seems small, but we just get rid of it altogether.
In the conditions, you had stated that the oil spill area will be repaired. So you left it out of the conditions. Do you want to leave it out of compensation as well?
Oh, it's just something I noticed while reading it. I'm not really.
And I just think you do have to leave out the size. I'll take care of the situation.
Okay. Take it out after oil spill period.
Ken.
Or after exists.
Yoli had a comment about.
Yoli.
The deal with if someone would have been overdrinking. And we don't have anything in the conditions. And we're thinking in terms of it falling back on the licenses. But is there anything that we need to put in there regarding people being served more than they should?
Or just leaving the sidewalk in public.
Did we put they were responsible for the patrons?
Yeah, they're responsible for the behavior of all guests.
Well, once they leave them, they're still responsible.
If you serve an alcoholic, you owe that person till next day. I mean, there was an incident, I think it was Sanford, it was a younger person. They called him a cab, sent him home, he was drinking at the place, and aspirated and died. So the lawsuit, and that really set the tone for insurance companies.
It's last place served.
Right, but ultimately, we don't want that to happen.
Exactly. The caterers get their license.
I mean, I don't know about the laws in Maine, but in Massachusetts, if you're a bartender and you go over service, I mean, you're taking help personally.
Personally, I will.
Well, it's like people are just there drinking their own alcohol from their cars.
Doesn't matter.
While they're at the party. The bartenders are still responsible. They're the only ones who serve.
As long as you're not suing. You don't have to sue them, it doesn't matter.
All right, so do we need to add anything in our case, or are we covered under the being responsible?
The last ones in the property owners will verify that all vendors are insured.
It's a fine line, do you want to be vague so it covers everything? Or do you want to be specific, so?
Tied in.
You're tied in, right?
I mean, they seem to understand. As I remember, again, back to the discussion, they were very quick to say that they would be, they would be very careful, the bartenders would be very careful. But it's, that doesn't matter with your deal with somebody all of a sudden selling a property, and then somebody else becomes owner, and things are different.
And we have in the past put in that this conditional use is for these people, and if another owner comes in, they need to come back or revise or an update. I forget how we worded that.
Is that something that you think we need to consider?
Did we do the conditional use already?
For this, for the wedding, maybe?
Because we'll add to our checklist, in the future, we may want to.
Can it have another change of use in or change of ownership?
Doesn't it say anything?
I'm specific for the day.
I'll be all booked up and have all of everybody else do it.
Trying to do gentility.
Wait for the answer. I'm very probably going to have to page some different pages.
This is all here.
In the indexes, very good.
No change is shaping me to improve conditional use, I think. And one would be a change?
Sure.
Ninety-four, six, six, three, two. Usually a conditional use runs with the property. You had a mariner of business, you would sell the business.
And we're just continuing, because that's kind of going against what we might want, though, right?
Something we could add to our checklist. If it's a specific use, we have a concern that we could just add it to it.
Even though we've already signed off on it?
In the future.
In the future, not for necessarily.
Exactly.
And of course, we're going to remember this the next time we have one.
We're going to add it to the checklist.
For the next wedding.
I can steal one from other big towns.
All right, then, any other issues with the minutes? We have a motion in a second. All right, all in favor? All opposed? All right, best practical locations, they're on. Which figure out the three and four streets?
Little house. This is an existing structure, and they just want to take the house down to the first floor, reuse the foundation and the first floor.
The first floor is behind the foundation, or inside of the foundation?
First floor deck, yeah. Yeah, currently, it's 34th Street, 34 feet from 34th Street.
Okay.
So with 34 feet from the street, so there's no room to remove it back. And they're reusing the existing foundation, 46 feet from the water. Side setbacks are well exceed.
Dwell in septic or all of, of the deck?
Yep, yeah, new septic was last year.
So he wants to remove the existing second floor, first floor?
Yep, get rid of the roof and the walls and leave the deck.
So that building would come down?
Yep.
What we're looking at would come down except for the deck?
Correct.
And what's the addition?
It would be reconstructed in the same spot.
Just with the full second story on it?
There wouldn't be a full second story. Well, you could, because you've got an existing foundation and it took 30%. It's a salt box going on top. Just a survey. So that one's, I would assume an easy one, where it's already 15 feet too close to the road. So there's no real room to move it back.
How about the deck?
Reconstructing that.
Just keeping the same footprint all together?
Yep.
This is the proposed.
What are the dimensions of your existing deck approximately? Oh, yeah, on there.
That's what it's going to be.
There's a little tile wall feet, is that right?
It's a good tile wall, compared to the others.
It's a double log.
250 square feet, is that what that means on the deck?
On the deck, yep.
Yeah.
And there's 54 more on the edge?
Yep, and then 768's to main, 24 by 32.
Got lots of pine trees, it's like the old pine, break up the pine needles style yard.
Yeah, we tried to convince them to just leave all that.
Yeah. What do we want to do with the, we already. I mean, it looked kind of like, seen the pine usually back when I was asking to do, put some burnt moss down on some of the areas, it doesn't block it as much, and things like that.
And this may be a, create a path, so you can be in the path.
Right, so they're walking everywhere, right?
Yep.
Yeah, great area. Is this just low water line, is that what, like you're standing?
Exactly, yeah.
Standing on the dock with the water, you can't, it's not there.
Is that just a little bit of place?
Right there?
Yeah.
I see if they can give you some erosion control, a bunch of pumpouts at least. Yes, like the sides of the path, and maybe some sort of stepping stones or something in the path.
Yeah, it's not a lot of.
Help us there.
How about if you're certain, the path coming down?
You're supposed to be and rent anyways, but.
What's the elevation from the water to the house?
Doesn't look like it's very much. 10 feet at the most, 6 feet. If it was steep, I'd say do some infiltration steps. But I think that would cause more harm than good, with all the roots.
And take it out.
Yeah, yeah. So I would just have them implement some best management practices, working with acting field or acting chaplain.
And the stepping behind the house?
Up on the street.
What's on the upper right of this picture, a little mound?
Right in this area?
Yeah. Into the right of that. Looks like that area could use some vegetation.
Oh, so a lot of the site could.
Looks a little brighter over there than.
Yep. So the main thing during the construction, they would do drip line trenches, and at least get the stormwater off the roof into the ground, so it's not continuously coming across this area. And then I think with some best management practices, mulching and vegetation on the site, that would clean that up too.
Is that more of a dry white that's coming down?
Over there, no. No, they're packed on the street side.
Any trees coming down?
I don't think so.
Just to access the place to demo it or whatever?
Yeah, yeah, this is actually standing on the street from this.
Oh, we got plenty of room there on this side of that.
Was there, oh, it's a little few steps coming off this doorway.
Yeah.
Longer pitch of a salt box between the rear of the house, so more stormwater would go to the rear that does now.
Yeah, and they redid the drainage around this three, four years ago, because they were having leaks inside, and they redid it. Damp proof, waterproof, put the drainage in, so they can implement the drip line trenches and take care of it.
Is that a brick sidewalk right there?
Uh, it looks like something there. That all got removed, for the septic though.
Oh, so that's a whole picture?
Yeah, yeah, this is assessing photo.
This is where we're standing where the septic is, which means.
Yep.
So it doesn't even look like that now, it's, probably has a little more grass on it, because they tried to re-vegetate it after they.
Yep.
Looks like grill and ties there on the waterside too.
Down through there, retaining wall in the front.
I didn't see that on the front picture.
That was the area that was the erosion control cell fence.
Oh, all the way down to the lawn?
Yeah, just right on that front side.
All right, what's anybody think?
We'll be along with Ken's recommendation on this.
We have to rephrase that, right? We have to rephrase. Ken's not making a recommendation, he's just throwing it out there.
Replace existing house on the same foundation. 34 feet from the road and 46 from the water.
You agree?
Yes.
Like you said.
Is there a second? Comments? All right, all in favor?
That was what said erosion control stuff.
Yeah.
Yeah, but also want to claim done by.
All opposed?
I'm already voted.
You can't delay.
All right, moving on.
This is one we did a few, I'm looking at half of so. When we looked at the setback from the water, 54 feet, that was offset, this loop indent comes in a little bit, which is not 54, it's 45. So we just wanted to clarify the relocation. Ask for a plan submitted, or?
Give us a little more background, what do we do?
We did a relocation.
Okay, so we moved it back.
We moved it back. This was the existing house right here, which was 38 from this cove area. We have some cove photos.
What room is it?
Lakeside drive. So this was the existing house here, 38 feet from the water. They demoed that, and are rebuilding in this footprint here, 54 feet from the water. But they missed this measurement here, and we're concerned that this cove cuts in a little bit.
Already put a motion in, or?
No.
And which direction does the roof line go, toward that 54?
Parallel with the lake and the road.
So the only place that it's less than what we thought is that little corner off the.
Yep, nothing really changes, it's just we missed that.
Everything else essentially is moved back, whatever number of feet that. This is the cove.
Because we had said, trying to demolish an existing structure, which is 38 feet from the shoreline, we build a new structure within the 30% allowance, of 54 feet from the shore. And that's what we missed.
It's 45 instead of 54.
That's what we missed.
54 here.
The contractor, they picked it up on the plan, and he's just concerned, which is a good concern.
With parallel, so this.
No, it's because he's just lucky.
Oh, I saw that too.
We didn't, he's just lucky.
So essentially, we're saying that.
The inlet.
That little, that picture shows it a little bit in that mix of the docks. We still have the majority of the house pushed back further than it had been before, correct? Anybody comment?
That's what we said before. And that's the indent right there.
That's a naturally occurring indent, it wasn't something, what, launched or something created?
It wasn't created in the last 30 or 40 years, it's been there for a long time. It seemed like in the 50s, a lot of people got back from what they were doing, and loved the poor concrete.
The inlet was concrete?
There's a retaining wall on the waterfront side, which, when you have a retaining wall on the waterfront side, it's really easy to measure your high water mark. But when you have the indent, the indent was right here, so this was right on that property line, and the new one's going to be relocated over there. So that's where the old one was, and the new one's.
Can you keep them pushing back these doors, or is there a line?
The neighbors called and swore, oh damn, we could have moved it back. I actually thought we missed something, but the power lines run right here. So the neighbor thought we should have had them move the power lines too.
Hope they are still talking.
It's all posted with no trespassing signs.
Talking with signs.
Sign language.
Lines of secret self-communication.
All right, what are we doing here, guys?
Ignoring.
Ignoring.
I'm letting the prior one to.
Motion to, okay, this one.
From the indent, 45 feet, no closer than 45 feet from the indent of the shoreline. Of course, we just don't want to word it that now the whole thing is 45 feet. And this was, we had one last week that had a similar thing, and we used that offset. And we could just reference this updated and revised plot plan too.
We could just indicate the corner of the buildings, the, you know, or the southwest.
That's about just three figures.
You know, whatever it is. Just reference which, which corner is which distance.
Can we get it out there as a motion?
Still can't get the words right.
Southwest probably be no more than.
45, is that what you're saying?
And less.
On the other corner, will it be?
It may be 54. No less than 45.
For the southwest corner.
For the southwest corner, and the rest of the southern waterside, it may be the 54.
Correct.
A bit, good with the motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any other comments? Clear? That's mine. All right, all in favor? All right, over this Timber Harvest Resource District. I threw something together after going on that sidewalk last week. To be honest with you, I got all done writing, and I wasn't sure that I covered what, everything that was discussed. So anybody who, you know, has an issue with what I wrote, you know, jump in there, we'll fix things. Additions will fix things, but I throw it out there for discussion. I didn't want to walk away from there without writing something. And I don't know as Joyce or Link, maybe got the maps, do you remember? Compared to the way they have the maps that were, because they were not here.
Is that the one that was?
I think I've got two by office.
I did, I did, we had it.
And there's two of them.
Okay, now who's missing one?
This right here is the house, the property owner's house, where we parked, it was in this area here. This area here, and then the drive moved up, so you can see the house under the overlay right there. Kind of see when the, when they were talking, they were kind of guessing right around about that area there, where it went from forested wetland to regular wetland.
They were referring to the differences in the trees, I believe, right? As their indication is.
Yep. And I think they have a definition of, of, that's 20 foot tall.
It's dominated by trees 22 or vegetation 22 or 22. That's dominated by trees twenty-three or vegetation twenty-three or twelve. I did kinda stick the word dominated at the sidewalk.
You cast it from interpretation.
Difficult, because there was only one species of tree over twenty feet in the area, red maple, which is known to grow in the water. So you have one species of tree, and then you have what, twenty different types of shrubs underneath, you couldn't even walk through the thing. It's like when there's a gill, is it on the canopy, or is it on the lower canopy? I mean, it would definitely have been on that lower bushy sort of, you know, weave your way through sort of area, so that, I don't know, I kinda stuck on the word dominated.
So you're questioning the difference between the forested wetland and the other wetlands?
Well, it just seems like the definition itself makes it hard to define, because just because the trees are taller than the other vegetation, but there's only a few of them out there, doesn't mean they're dominant, just because they're taller.
Right.
That's, I can't, well maybe I thought about it too much.
Yeah, which would keep it as wetland.
Yeah, it would keep it forested, if there's just, those red maples out there over twenty feet.
Yeah.
There are places in the county, I'm thinking, kind of earlier, on the county road, before you get to the state compound, you're in that hollow there.
Yeah.
That's definitely an area where you would have no, uh, division over the notion of it being a forested land versus an open land. You look out and you see the, the stream flowing, and then totally around this is a red maple swamp.
Swamp maple, yeah.
Can't think of another place that can illustrate that more clearly than that. I thought Steve's example of that was a little tough to analyze.
So our next, um, specific agenda regarding timber harvesting would be sometime in November, when, as I remember, somebody from the state, but I don't remember that person's title.
Shoreland zoning, if we're gonna move there, I would at least just take a poll of the board to make sure the board wants to go in that direction, to deregulate or change the timber harvesting in the local resource protection. So we don't put a lot of time and effort and...
Something I'm not gonna push.
Do anything about. Yeah, I mean, if people are for, if they're willing to keep going and listen to more people, I can tell you the state's gonna push it towards statewide timber standards.
To be honest, I think that, you know, my logic is, I thought I moved toward statewide standards a year ago. And voted for that. And then it came to the, you know, it became me and the people voted for that. And then it came to be that we didn't do that.
We didn't bring the timber harvesting in.
Correct. So, so my logic is, I think, my opinion, that I need to perhaps vote to move that so that it becomes statewide standard. Uh, I don't have the issue in my own mind of having those wetlands follow the statewide standard, yet I don't mind the fact that you can't build on it. My logic there is, trees will come back. If we harvest it, the tree will come back. If you build a house there, the house is not gonna go anywhere. It's gonna be there forever. So I have a problem with the differences.
Yep, the land can be converted too. Sealed or something, I mean, we were looking at it, that was swamp, and it was, nobody's probably even gonna wanna harvest that land.
Right, it would be good to see another example of like a forested wetland where there's, you know, a variety of trees out there, and it's a rather large area that isn't necessarily contiguous with a ten acre wetland, that's, you know...
So, so that being said, you know, if we're looking for people's opinions as to where we wanna go with this, I'm willing to go forward with it, and, and with the idea that I'm leaning toward the fact that I would rather get it back into the state guidelines.
So that would lose the oversight of a forester on any of these projects?
Mandated.
Mandated?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, Oliver has said, and, you know, Steve has supported the notion that if we decide to go, go back to adoption statewide standards, what we would be gaining is the ability to utilize main foresters for enforcement issues, otherwise, unless we clean up our little areas of, um, difference with the statewide standards, you're not gonna be able to avail ourselves of that. I would, I would be thinking along the same lines as, as, uh, Mark, uh, that because of the permanence, and really more, the more impacts, you have more pervious surface with, uh, buildings, you have sceptic consideration, you have roads and driveways, and just generally a more intrusive relationship of building and development.
Yep, a good timber harvest really has very little ground disturbance.
Yeah.
With a knowledgeable timber person, they can approach the site in a sensitive area.
And the other thing, you wanna call it politically or philosophically, the notion of property rights, I think, is more, um, easily understood in the building and development standards that I would personally hate to lose, which are devised by an act of town meeting and supported by an act of town meeting. Versus, it seems to be an initial disturbance in the sites of areas, but really, I don't think it's over the long term.
I think if we're still going in this direction, I'd have Southern Main Regional buildings and another set of maps, and reduce all the town shoreline zoning and resource protection to bring it down to statewide standards. We've got those maps, but we can't overlay them very good, and we just have another layer on these maps.
To utilize situations where we're dealing with forestry.
Yep, and just for forester, is how it sounds.
I would suggest any...
Right side of the woods pocket. You'd be right.
Why don't we just defer to the, hopefully the forester, or in the absence of a forester, wouldn't they have to get a wetland delineator?
I don't think so. I think it's just the guy in the skidder.
Really?
Yeah. I mean, the toughest thing is the notifications, and the notification, the timber harvest notification we got last week, the timber harvest started in April, it'll be finished in December.
Yeah, when was it done?
Exactly.
Six months previous.
I think it was four months to get to us.
That's an issue that I thought both Steve and Oliver were in support of trying to change at the state level, so I think that's maybe the best we can do.
Yeah, we're not gonna get them any faster.
No. Unless there's, there's a little bit of, um, support that we can gain from most of those gentlemen to start a conversation that the main foresters, uh, to, to, um, make that more accessible for everyone.
It's hard though, because even though you're talking to Steve, now, like, you go to the forester meeting, meet with other foresters, can you ask them to send a notification to the town? He didn't wanna do that, and then if there's no forester on the job site, I, I don't, I don't know.
Unless you've got somebody who calls and says, hey, what's going on?
Well, I mean, it's really, it's a, it's kind of a big issue, it's like, if you're gonna build a house in the town, what do you do first? Pick up the hammer, or do you call the town? It's the same thing with a logging operation that can be affecting hundreds of acres, whereas a house is just, you know, a building, so...
Exactly, I agree with you.
Really, the, the early, uh, informing of, of the town, of a cut proposal, doesn't get us any further ahead in the game in terms of putting in costs.
Well, it ensures our position, so in the future, if we wanna have a town forester to deal with these sort of things, it's already in there, it'd be much easier to do it. You know, as soon as we get rid of, it's hard to get something back once we throw it out, like, here we are, we, oh, we don't need foresters in the resource protection anymore, as well. I still fan, I still stand here saying we need, there should be a forester for every single commercial harvest in the town. And I've been saying that for years, so there's no, I mean, I don't know.
I, I agree with you, yeah. In terms of the, the outcome probably being better, but again, this is, this is an issue like, telling people that they have to utilize a certain, um, builder or something.
Well, they can't build the doghouse, but they can clear cut a wetland that serves everyone in the town.
Hey, that's my line.
Well, it's a good line, I mean, I think that... No, I mean, that's really, I feel like doing this is the first step to undermine the resource protection in terms of development as well, and everybody knows my opinion, so...
But weren't we going that way a year ago?
Well, it doesn't matter, what we did is, we conform with state standards exactly. We have option one, two, and three, which refer to the state protected shoreline zone. We're completely in conformance of the state. We have all that verbiage written in the ordinance, we voted it all in. There's, there's no reason that we're not in conformance, we just have extra verbiage. So what we did at the town meeting was, we, we did come into conformance, I still say we're in conformance. I think these other nitty-pitty things are not, it doesn't make us non-conformance, we just have stronger standards than the, than the state, which is completely acceptable, we've always done that, that's what resource protection is about, so...
Look, if we, if we maintain the same standards of buffers, of resource protection areas that we currently have, and have gone through the mill on in terms of supporting them after some serious challenges a number of years ago, I don't see the same level of damage, uh, occurring with the acceptance of statewide standards pertaining only to the harvesting issue, commercial harvesting. I know, I know it feels like we're giving up something, but my sense of, of the separation was, in my own mind, I didn't think that was applicable to timber harvesting anyway. I thought that only, um, referred to building and development issues. The buffers that we, we worked with Southern Main Regional to devise. It's not a perfect world, but, um, sometimes you have to make decisions that are seeking a little ground, and I think that's important.
A question, when, when someone comes in to do this, do they not have to go to the town and say, X, Y, Z company, and we're going to go into this area, and we're gonna be, you know, cutting or harvesting, I should say, harvesting this area, and have a nice day? I mean, they don't have to, I just, I don't know.
Just to the state, they took that form, intent to harvest to the state, and then the state eventually...
Eventually gives it to us.
Whereas, I mean, there's obviously a problem with the state where they've defunded the place that they're supposed to be helping the municipalities.
But there's nothing that says, you know, you walk in upstairs, and this is a proposal to, to harvest, there's nothing like that that happens now?
No, that's what, we tried to introduce that concept with the notice of intent to cut, except it's ten. But the, the, uh, the way things are organized, that doesn't work that way. And Oliver and Stephen have said, if you, if you're adamant that that's what you want to happen, the state will not help us with, will not assist us with anything.
Well, I know if we're not in conformance with, with, they are not going to help us if we're not in conformance with them. But by adding this, simply superseding what, you know, they're saying A, B, C, D, and we're saying A, B, C, D, E, and E is notification to the town of your intention.
I think we've covered that a number of times, as we've said.
That negates it.
Three or four points that we have, where we're diverging from statewide standards pertaining to commercial harvesting, are, are, um, points that would...
Would negate the conformance, okay.
They would just say, sorry, we can't work on that, because you're, you're interjecting some standards here that we're not gonna abide by, we can't abide by on this first one. On the intent to cut form, they can't abide by, we've seen that. So essentially, nothing's gonna change there. We're crossing it out, maybe, as one of the requirements we like, but it was never physically able to be implemented. In real life, we're not losing anything there. And the, the, on page seventy-three, the so-called options, Stephen said to me this morning, he said, these, these three areas of description of, uh, what do you call it, um...
Just harvest options.
Mention options or something, they're on the permit, and really, they don't need to be in the book, they're on the intent to cut. I, I suggested to him, wouldn't it be useful to leave those in there, just as informative, um, measures for the landowner? And he said, well, that happens underground or something, I don't know.
I heard there is any landowner?
No, no, thank you. I still think it'd be useful if they gave a little bit of guidance to landowners in, in the ten years. And that would avoid our chance of...
Anybody else?
It's still being unclear about the real benefits of, of the state helping us, as I look coming in, apple is made in fractions, at which point the damage is already done, and don't put the trees back anyway. So I really don't even really see the benefit of having the state do it.
What do you think about that?
What do we need in, in your mind, will the state be able to manage?
It's very much more knowledgeable as far as picking out a infraction that's more than seventy-five feet away from the resource, when you start to calculate the basal area and stuff like that, I mean, it's what they do.
It also keeps the town maybe on a safer, uh, mentality of whatever, more congenial mentality with landowners probably is. It's not as, as intrusive, once the town backs off of some of these things. And the market is gonna have to kind of, hopefully, will improve the quality of timber harvesting work that we see in town all the time, if folks like the mentality of Stephen can prevail, I guess. We'd like to think that maybe there's some discussion between forest landowners that certain individuals are more, um, are better to work with and will yield a better result, and over the long term will, will enhance the value of all the landowners' forests, rather than just depending on one of the fellow with a skidder and a couple of trucks to make those kind of decisions.
Well, and going back to what your original question was, Ken, does that discussion help you as far as deciding whether or not it's worth us going further?
That's up to you guys.
Yeah, I can hear from the rest of the board, I mean, personally, I'd like to have everyone's personal opinion, because we can go back and forth like this all night.
I think if you just took a straw poll to see if we wanna continue on this route?
Right, I guess we don't have to get too in-depth, and just say, continue, or, I mean, obviously... obviously it seems like we're going to continue, but we could get the opinion of the other members, we would define it thoroughly, but that seems to...
I mean, even though we are on opposite, appear to be on opposite sides, but we are going forward.
I don't think we are on opposite sides. I think that the people from the state are badgering the town and that, that honestly, I feel like the foresters are being too aggressive with the planning board and, and heavy handed, so.
All right, what do you, does everybody feel?
I'd like to hear other people's opinions, but we don't have to do that tonight.
Are we in agreement that we want to go forward?
When you say going forward, you mean adopting, conforming with statewide standards?
Well, going forward with the potential possibility of doing that, but getting more information, whether that means looking at other sites, whether that means bringing somebody in, you know, regardless of what it is that we do, but other than that, I guess the opposite side would be, okay, drop it, we'll leave it exactly like it is and we'll move on to other things.
So the question, the motion might be, where does the board's, shall the board reach a decision on whether to, whether we should conform with state standards and gain enforcement assistance when needed by the main forest service?
I don't think we're quite there.
No, I'm not looking to say, we're just looking to see, do we want to go forward from today or do we want to drop it essentially?
Well, that's a decision. You're turning, you're coming at it from a different perspective. You're saying, shall we stay the course and Acton will hold on to its buffers relative to building and development and make those also applicable to timber harvesting?
Is the board interested in going forwards with adopting statewide standards? Looking at the...
That's the way I would like to phrase it.
But again, we're just looking for people's opinion, we're not looking for any kind of official votes. We're just looking to see if we are as a group willing to go forward to see if we do want to adopt those statewide standards.
How about a straw poll?
That's fine with me. Everybody all willing to do that?
Can we say this is non-binding?
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Just clarifying, straw poll.
My straw's a little messy.
It's not a fence. It's, it's, yeah, we, we are just trying to indicate to ourselves whether or not it's worth pursuing the idea of going forward with state standards or conforming with state standards, but it is a, a non-binding straw poll that I'm asking for at this point.
Which could include bringing more people in to talk to us, sidewalks, we'll continue to look at this.
Absolutely.
More discussion.
Yep. I mean, with the idea being that we need to perhaps make a decision if we're going forward, we still perhaps need to make a decision by January-ish so that they put things together for the, the town meeting.
Correct.
Correct, exactly.
So, so we know we have an end point if we were to continue to go forward or something close to an end point approximately. All right, so then, again, straw poll, non-binding, all of those in favor of going forward to seek more information about the statewide, adopting the statewide standards?
To seek more information?
Yes.
Certainly.
Okay. So, so there's, there's an answer that was pretty much unanimous, um, and so lets in our minds, what do we want to do next? It's October. If we want the person from, is it the DEP to come forward to us, November is probably the time to do that. Once we hit December, if I had my dates right when I looked today, thinking about it anyway, we have, the second meeting in December is going to be, I think, awful close to Christmas, so we may not even, I don't know, whether we're going to be able to pull off a meeting or not, we'll have to just see what happens.
I can't be here Christmas Eve.
Well, it's not quite that.
Christmas is Monday.
You can't be here Christmas Eve?
21st is the Thursday.
So anyway, I'm just sort of out there saying that there's not a lot of meetings between now and...
I'll try to see if I can get it in October. If not, I have two holes in...
In November.
In November.
Okay. All right. What about a site visit? Another site visit before winter?
I don't have a bad idea.
I mean, I guess I don't even know who, where we would go with finding one.
Yeah.
I mean, I guess we could depend on Steve, I mean, I guess if he's willing to go and search for another one.
And maybe the next one we want doesn't have any state shoreline zoning on it. Maybe this one's just 100% town only, doesn't, didn't exist.
Yeah, but you kind of get hung up on where does the lines, which is kind of wasted some time.
I think that's a very...
And all of a sudden, we'll start with them.
Why don't we even get back into the cup to see what they did in there?
So I'll try to look for a site.
I want to be the individual that would come down from DEP.
Like Morris?
And I, I'm not sure. What input on this?
He's shoreline zoning, he's the director for shoreline zoning at the Portland office. He's the one that drafted the statewide standards to merge in and he's, he's in charge of all that.
He's the one that developed timber harvest, commercial timber harvesting standards relative to that land, so that's really the, and main forest service worked in conjunction with it.
Yep.
Okay.
Gavin, you were going to say something or?
I think I pretty much covered it, I was just, you know.
I mean, I guess again, we're, we're running out of time to even get the site visit in. I mean, I guess that's not realistic. I guess we could be depending on the snows.
There's a highway down, what's that, it was on, David White did it, um, below the transfer station.
On the other side of the street?
No, same side. That must have been Gordon Morgan's land prior to the sale, right? I don't think there's any...
No, it's not there.
Might be a fertile pool, but that's about it. I don't know. But that's kind of, would be a good example and it's right closer to hand. I don't know if Stephen had anything to do with that one. He used to work with me.
Do you think we should set an official, this is, when is town meeting?
June.
Yeah, okay, so, yeah.
Does it have to be a recent cut, like done by a commision?
I think it could be an area that's not cut at all.
Yeah, that's what I was saying. But, but say we have, I don't, are we going to meet January 2nd, uh, 3rd, I'm sorry, January 4th, I mean, that...
Probably, yeah.
January 4th and, but if we say, January 18th, this is our date.
Well, the town, I mean, upstairs, they're going to give us a date.
Usually.
They're going to say, you're going to have, you have to have anything in by such and such a date.
Yeah, but that's what I mean by, so we have to, you know, either that first meeting or the last meeting, this is, you know.
We have a little more leeway, don't we, when we do the, the ordinance questions? It seems like we do.
Yeah, we're working backwards from it, so, I mean, this would be just past the transfer station on the right, this is two acres of forested wetlands right there. So this whole area would be potentially able to be totally harvested.
Groundhog again.
Landscape Depot, Tasback, we did the pit for them right by, right across the street from Joe Rovers. But we just have, what's that? Uh, North Country, oh, is that?
We could walk in there and take a peek and look at something that potentially could be cut if we changed to the state standards.
Correct. So we would want to get the owner's permission and actually know where this is, so without any...
He's hopeful.
You're marking out there.
If you walk more not far enough, you get to West Shore Drive.
Isn't there a creature living in there?
I'm kidding.
Large cat, there's a large cat.
Little match cat.
He has lots of coyote friends, so I'll tell you.
All right, you think that's a reasonable one?
I'll keep looking. There's another one that's almost right up to the road across from Peppin's entrance. This area was old seeds, so, and they, they were the ones that just did that.
Moose pond?
Moose pond, so, and somebody that we can, so this would be an easy one to find and locate and it looks like the buffer goes right up to the road.
Is there anything down on Richard Nass's lawn?
That's someone I was talking about.
Which one?
Not Chris Brown?
Um, Sand Page and Na, oh, Nazirton, I was talking about Sand Page.
Nat, Nass, not...
Oh, Nass.
This looks like it might be a good one because you've got two you can kind of look at there.
The chick is not on, you know.
Oh, sorry.
Keep pointing.
I'm going to sleep. As long as Nancy does, it's on the map.
They don't, they don't.
Uh, so this is the entrance into Peppin's pit, right on that corner is, that must be a two acre, and that's another two acre one right there. Got almost like two. This has a lot of wetland connected with it there, so we'll, we'll keep trying to find something that hasn't been harvested and is relatively small.
Then it's just another maybe a phone call or two?
Yeah. To let them know that Trump wanted the problem.
All right, anybody else then? I'm terrible harvest. We good then? We're going to go forward, it seems. We, we are pulling the guy from the DEP and we're going to try and get set up a sidewalk over the next couple of meetings or in that timeframe of the next couple of meetings. Okay, great. Anything else? You got anything else additional to?
No. Have we had a statement on, in the minutes of what our straw poll vote was?
I, I wrote it down.
You're not so much to quote yourself or what, what was the issue that you...
The...
Statement that we're actually calling?
You have a motion?
Yeah.
To continue.
Do you want that read?
I hope you don't want her read.
It was just to go forward and seek more information. That's what I voted in favor of, but that's what we did.
Some people was just specific to what you were looking for.
It's not funding at all.
All right, anybody else? Oliver, the beer? Okay. Thanks.